Good evening, welcome everyone. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Wednesday, September 28th, 2022. Would you be kind enough to join me, please, in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are, we have a fair amount of items on the agenda this evening, and so we'll try to dive right in on that. We're back in person, and we're trying to do it remotely as well at the same time, sort of a practice round for when and if we have to go back to a hybrid combination, which we expect to have to do fairly frequently. So, tonight, here we are on the big screen. You get to see some of the agenda items that we'll be discussing. We have a continuation, and unfortunately, there'll be another continuation on the public hearing for the Spectrum franchise agreement. We're just waiting on a couple of minor things back from their legal department, and it's been taking quite some time now. So, we'll be doing a motion to continue the public hearing. We have a resolution, first item, to support the New York State Environmental Bond Act. We're not going to be voting on that tonight. We're really, tonight, going to take a few minutes out, and we have some guests with us this evening to help the folks at home understand that there is a ballot referendum coming up this November. It's a $4.2 billion bond, and some of the uses for the monies, and how it might be beneficial to local communities like ours. We have an update on the LWRP, a couple of key items, and Paula Schoonmaker is here to help us with our public outreach associated with those two sections. We're going to discuss very briefly a contribution towards Red Hook Responds in the Community Center for a community-wide Rhinebeck Red Hook Needs Assessment. We also have a resolution to approve the extension of the facilities agreement with the Red Hook Central School District. They use a lot of our recreation facilities, and in exchange for that, we ask for a contribution towards maintenance of the properties. We'll be discussing a request from Highway on doing some privateization of Snow Road Mobile in the event we don't have enough individuals to do the plowing this winter. We have some reorg to do, and then committee and board reports. And with that said, let's jump right into a public hearing. Deanna, could you give us just a summation of the public hearing notice, because we are going to move to extend that to the second meeting in October? Deanna is with us here somewhere.
Yeah, it doesn't look like she's needed.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, they can hear you.
Please take notice of the public hearing extended from June 14th, 2022, further extended from July 12th, 2022, and further extended from August 29th, 2022, will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on September 28th, 2022, at 7:30 PM local time, to hear all interested persons on a proposed franchise renewal agreement between the Town of Red Hook and Spectrum Northeast LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications Incorporated. Spectrum has submitted an application to construct and operate a cable television system within the Town of Red Hook and has requested a grant by the Town Board of a non-exclusive franchise. The Town Board has the authority to grant said franchise pursuant to Town Law Section 64.7 after holding a duly noticed public hearing that affords the public the opportunity to provide comment. The Town Board has determined that pursuant to NYCRR 17.5C7, the proposed franchise renewal agreement constitutes a Type II action as defined under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRA. And meeting will be held via teleconference or video conference, and please refer to the meeting agenda on the website, www redhookny.gov. And you can also contact Town Clerk by 4 o'clock PM, the day of hearing, and all reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, contact the Town Clerk. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated August 29th, 2022, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thanks, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there somebody here who would like to speak on this matter? Okay, didn't think so. All right, well, before we go ahead and close it, I would like to make a motion to extend the public hearing to our second meeting in October. That would be October 26th at 7:35. Hopefully, we'll get word back from Spectrum, and we can vote on a contract renewal, we'd like to think. All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon? Bill Hamer?
Aye.
Okay, very good. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Bill Hamer?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Some announcements, then we'll take public comments. The VFW would like us to be aware of some events they're having. They're having Oktoberfest on Sunday, October 16th. And there's what the options are for food, $20 for adults. They're doing a pancake breakfast. By the way, I see no vegetables with VFW in any of these events. We'll have to...
No vegetables.
What's that?
There was cabbage.
There was cabbage.
Fruit.
That's fruit, okay. Very good. Pancake breakfast, Sunday, October 2nd, that would be this Sunday upcoming, from 8:00 to 11:00. That's also at the VFW Event Hall. We have an upside-down sheet here, okay. Tivoli is following Red Hook's lead, I think. They are having their own shred day Saturday, October 1st, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. I had no idea shred day would be so popular here in Red Hook, but the events we've done have been very, very busy and well-received. You are limited to three banker-sized boxes, dimensions of which are 10 by 12. It's happening at the library parking lot up in Tivoli. And AARP is looking for volunteers. As you know, this is a really great service that's being offered, volunteer folks who need help with preparing their taxes each and every year. And so, if you have that skill set, they ask that you reach out to them, the Dutchess Community Action Partnership, of which we have an office right here on East Market Street. And one more for VFW, October 16th. They have their Stop 22 Challenge. It's an event to bring awareness to veterans who sadly commit suicide, 22 of which happen incidents each day. And so, on the 16th, from noon to 2 PM, there's just a dollar registration fee for that run event. That's what we have for announcements. Public comments? Would anybody like to make any public comments before we get into it?
Robert, can I have one more announcement?
Yes, oh, please, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Absolutely.
Lori, let me know that the next Repair Cafe will be happening on November 5th. So, that's always a really good event, so we encourage everybody to mark it on the calendar.
It's at the Community Center.
It's at the Community Center.
Community Center. And there was hope to have one October 1st, so if you got that notice, just know that's been rescheduled to November 5th.
Excuse me. I couldn't hear Jacob at all.
Oh, sorry, November 5th. Jacob, don't forget, you're...
I'm muted.
Your computer, your computer. You want to turn?
Sorry about that, Deanna. I was muted.
November 5th. Got that, Deanna?
I don't know what it is, I couldn't hear him.
Oh, sorry, Repair Cafe, Community Center.
Oh, good, okay, thanks.
All right, good. Thanks. All right. Let's jump right into it. So, we have a draft resolution supporting the Environmental Bond Act of 2022. That's if we want to entertain that, and we won't do that, entertain that until our next meeting. More importantly, we just want to make folks aware that there is a ballot proposition, and it's an environmental bond. And so, we have with us Lori Houston. Lori Houston from the CAC. What would you like on the screen? We have some information from Sina Hudson.
She's... ...a visual.
Here's a visual. Okay.
I just want to, first of all, thank you for raising awareness that this bond act exists, and that it will get on the other side of their ballot in November. The Act, you know, is really containing where Florida is currently under threat from a hurricane, and they're going to be reacting to emergency, and this bond act lets us prepare ahead of time before the disasters happen, among other things. So, New York has passed bond act in the past, I think about a dozen. Nothing like this has happened in about a quarter century, and so it's time, very much time, to do this kind of work in light of all the impacts that we can see, sea loaches and flooding events. So, really glad we're getting out ahead of it in New York, we hope. Are there maybe five areas where we're going to see something help us locally? In particular, if we fund things for open space and land conservation and recreation, all things that we know are very important to our community's well-being. We have our terrific rec park. These are great places for people to get outside, and we'll have a chance to put such things in place, preserve our farms. And we do so much, but we can always do more with this kind of funding. Our advocates, beautiful views in open space, and so there's money to restore habitat and always plant more trees. It's very hard to argue with planting more trees. We have great committees who do that work. Let's help them get more funding, more trees in the ground. Another area, clean air. Where can we invest in particular with this money? It's exciting to think about what we can do for our school buses. There's a lot of diesel pollution and impacting young lungs on these buses, and so we can move over to electric. That will be terrific. Likewise, some green building projects in our school buildings to increase energy efficiency and use renewables, so that's good stuff. Another area, public health and safety. Many homes in Red Hook got too hot this summer, and heat waves are more frequent, so let's get some money for cooling centers. We already have some, but we need more. We have to have enough places to cool all of us. Fourth area, updated infrastructure, fixing our roads and stormwater infrastructure. I think about, you know, when a bridge goes down, how inconvenient that is. Let's plan ahead, get some money to fix our bridges before they're taken out by these storms, even a couple weeks, inconveniences, and more than that. So, money for those things in our community. And other eligible projects will be related to wetlands, streams, forests, and wildlife habitat restoration, protecting people, mentioned protecting roads, but also buildings from flooding by acquiring, moving, lifting, or raising blood from properties. So, we need, we know which homes in our community is impacted, so let's take care of it. Clean drinking water. We're hearing about new green communities, finding fluids in their drinking water. This money will allow us to replace pipes, let pipes, expand doors, and update water treatment plans, reduce runoff from farms, improving food health, even thinking about our streams without green tinge on them. I drove over in Milpont, you know, it's not necessarily a harmful algorithm yet, but they are coming, so let's get ahead of it, and we do drink water from our feet. This is a great opportunity, and it's a great opportunity for jobs, which are all local, when you do this work. So, there are over 200 orgs already on board in support of this, trying to get the word out, which is the biggest thing. So, again, so appreciative, you're doing this resolution. I bet, in particular, the American Farmland Trust, New York Regional Director, saying this act comes at a critical time with potential to mitigate these challenges and providing crucial support to protect our agricultural economy, farm viability, environmental stewardship, and local food systems. So, just thank you, and look forward to your vote next round. And I gave you all some details about where all the money is, all the billions, and not to end on a negative note, but I did Google how many times we've had disaster declarations in Dutchess County, and it's been 26, whether it's hurricanes, bigger storms, snow, flood, or others. So, let's get this going. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. So, just some of the categories, update water infrastructure, $650 million allocated to that. Reducing climate risk, 1.1. Public health and safety, 1.5. Took up pollution and clean the air. You talked about the school buses, retrofitting public buildings, which we've already done Wildlife, jobs, you know, often we don't talk enough about the jobs that are created when we're working on these environmental issues, and often we don't talk about the economics of it. You know, a lot of the moves that we've made here in the Town of Red Hook have saved taxpayers quite a bit of money, and have certainly reduced the cost of our budgets. Everything from, you know, retrofitting this building to creating a solar farm, to having additional solar on the highway garage, to doing the community choice aggregation, saving the taxpayers, you know, hundreds and hundreds of dollars. So, important to know that when you put these things in place, streetlights, LEDs, we replaced something in the neighborhood of one-third the cost of what we were paying, taxpayers were paying for the streetlights here. So, the financial aspect of it doesn't necessarily get enough notice by the public. Okay, so, do we have referendum language that we can point to? We'll put it up on our website. It's probably a very simple, one or two question proposition, right? Lori, do you have that by any chance? Is it in our package?
I think that it is.
Yeah, okay. All right, so that'll be on the back of your ballot when you go voting. Tuesday, November 8th.
Technically, Deanna, if you remember, that audio, other than I'm hearing the comments you're on the Zoom, so Lori's comments were not audible.
Lori, your comments weren't loud enough? We should put that in the mic a little bit.
It's not coming through on Zoom.
Oh, coming through on the Zoom. All right, so it'll have to be, it'll have to get a little closer then, so we can hear you from these microphones. All right. Well, Paula, when you come up and do LWRP, would you be kind enough to take that microphone and come closer to us?
What?
Just...
Was it to the microphone?
No, bring the microphone towards us. Pick the whole thing up. Bring it with you. It's your dancing partner. That'll do, that'll do.
Thank you.
And we'll just make sure. I don't, it doesn't sound very loud to me. Are you sure it's on? Give it a...
Tap it.
Give it a tap.
No, it's closer to your hand, like, to the top.
Oh, that?
Yep.
Okay, does that sound better, or no?
Tap it, tap it.
Tap it. Yeah, it's there. You just have to be loud.
You gotta just flip the switch towards the top, the switch you just did.
It was working.
It was working, it just wasn't...
Can you hear that?
No, the switch has to go the other direction.
That's where it was.
Yep.
Okay.
There you go.
Can you hear that?
Yeah, you have to be very close with this microphone for some reason. Can we dial up our microphone at all, Steve?
Oh, that's okay, I'll just...
Yeah?
Let's pick it up.
You know, I don't know what you want to use.
All right.
Yeah, well, you know what? I'll just...
Project.
Yeah.
We're having lots of technological fun tonight. Okay.
So, Amy Houston and I are here tonight to, for our second public outreach for our local waterfront revitalization program update.
Okay.
And I'm just going to start out with a brief recap of what's happened so far. In case you missed it, the Local Waterfront Revitalization Program project that we're doing is a multi-section document that New York State municipalities with coastlines on the ocean or rivers or on major lakes may create. The Town of Red Hook has had an approved LWRP since 1995, and it's still in effect. The village of Tivoli is also updating their LWRP, and German Town is developing one for the first time. An approved LWRP gives the municipality some standing or voice with some weight in matters that pertain to its waterfront revitalization area. That is, the town may object to or concur with any project, including state or federal projects, that might be proposed to impact its waterfront revitalization area. Also, any local project planned for a parcel within the WRA must be found to be consistent with the LWRP before it can move forward. So, previously, we completed Sections 1 and 2. Section 1 defines the water revitalization area as generally the area between Route 9G West, west to the county line in the Hudson River, and from the northern town boundary to the southern town boundary. Section 2, the inventory section, identifies and assesses the natural, cultural, and man-made resources that we have in that area. The town provided a public review and comment period for these two sections in October 2021, and submitted a vote to the New York State Department of State with approval. Now, the Town Committee has completed drafts of Sections 3 and 4, and the presentation of those two sections to the Town Board and to the public is our purpose here tonight. Section 3 takes a look at New York State coastal policies with an eye toward our own waterfront area. We've been allowed and encouraged to tweak those policies so that they focus on our local resources and concerns, as long as those tweaks are consistent with state policies. In Section 4, the Committee has compiled a list of 15 possible projects that it believes will enhance and/or protect the waterfront revitalization area. But that number is that? Oh, go...
That one.
Okay.
No, that's Langius's.
No, well...
You want project?
I'm skipping around. Go down to map, go down to map 10.
Map 10?
That's 13, keep going. There you go. So, this is, this map 10 is a new map, and it's the proposed land use is basically the same as in 1995. It's just digital and in color, and easier to read. We haven't really changed much. It's a much broader land use map than individual uses of different parcels, so it's more of a broad brush. So, keep on going, let's look for map number 11.
I don't know that we have map number 11, I didn't see that one.
No, no, keep going.
Is it after the photos?
No, I don't, I don't know that.
Well, let's go, actually, let's go up. Let's go up to those pictures. So, these are some of the projects. Go to the photos.
It's the last one.
Yeah, to the photo.
Wait, do you want to...
Any one.
We can do your map if you want. You like this?
One of the projects that we planned, what we proposed, are some bird watching. Bird watching was very high on our original survey of what people in the community do for recreation in the coastal area. So, we're proposing some bird watching platforms, nature watching platforms. That's one of the, one of the projects. Okay, keep going to another photo. This is a photo of the invasive species, and specifically water chestnuts, that have impacted especially the little harbors and Tivoli Bay, so that it's very hard for people to kayak or canoe, or really enjoys any outdoor recreation there. So, the Town of Sopas has a water chestnut removal program in place, and we're proposing that the Town look at that and see if it might be appropriate to our town. Okay, what else forgot? Yeah, no.
You want, you want that other map?
There was another map, but that's...
It's coming, no, it's coming.
No, it's all right.
It's coming, it's coming.
We don't need all of it.
This is the entire Section 4. There you go.
So, this map is another one of our new maps, so all it does is take the 15 proposed projects, and the ones that have a specific locality, we placed on this map, so that if we're talking about bridge repair, there's a number that matches up with the proposal in the narrative, and then you can find it on the map. So, that's another new map.
Okay.
So, these projects, some of them were carried over from the 1995 LWRP, and new projects that have suggested by groups such as the Town Trails Committee, the Conservation Advisory Council, Sawkill Buttershed Community, Sina Hudson, the Town Historian, and other groups, and various individual members of the Town of Red Hook community. So, that's part of Section 4. Also in Section 4 is a harbor management plan, which is a new requirement, and addresses issues within the water portion of our waterfront revitalization area. So, now if you go up and find those other maps that were in the beginning.
Do they have other maps?
You'll see that.
I think they started it.
Going, going. This is one of the new maps that shows the depths of the river and the channel, which is that white part that snakes along, close to Kruger Island. And then, that orange line that's going down through the channel is the cable that's going to be installed this summer. It's, what is it, Central?
The Champlain.
Yeah, like Champlain, like Champlain Power Express cable.
Champlain.
So, that's an intrusion into our waterfront revitalization area, and we want to show it on the map. So, that's one of the maps. Then go up one more, one more map. There you go. And this is actually shows where in our waterfront revitalization area, see all the habitats in the green that are, you know, covered Tivoli Bay, both of them. And so, and again, it shows that cable, and it shows some waterfront beacons for the shipping lanes. So, so these are our new maps. Since we don't have an actual town harbor or public waterfront area, our harbor management plan focuses on preserving our scenic and historic areas, and on conserving fragile habitats and wildlife, primarily by maintaining water quality. It also voices concerns about invasive species, cable, and other intrusions into our river waters and the effects of climate change. At the same time, this section sets out some goals for the area, including providing safe public access to the river, expanding waterfront recreation opportunities, promoting water safety, and protecting the fragile habitats, which are vital to our local economy and our overall well-being. These two newly completed sections, together... These two newly completed sections, together with the new maps, will be available on the town website. Hopefully tomorrow I'll get that to you. We've also placed hard copies and binders in the town hall at the Red Hook Public Library and the Timbly Public Library. We ask that you read these sections and look at the wonderful maps. We also ask that when you finish reviewing these materials, you take a few minutes to fill out the accompanying short survey, which you can access via a link on the town website. There are also paper copies of the survey available at the libraries and town hall for those who don't have access to the online survey or would rather use a paper copy. So that's all I've got.
Okay. I think we've already put all four sections on the website, but I'll make sure, you know, tomorrow morning we've got.
No, you can't. You know, maybe you did, but I'll send you a better one.
A better?
Interpersed where they're supposed to be.
Wonderful.
I just need the link to the survey.
Okay.
Waiting for the link to the survey.
Okay. Well, that'd be a good time to.
Tonight, actually.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Paula, thank you. Amy, thank you. Thank the whole committee. It's been an enormous amount of work. I don't think people realize just the magnitude of the workload associated with updating a local waterfront revitalization plan. And you guys have put in so many hours, so we really thank you. And hopefully we'll realize some of these projects here in short order.
I have to ask, are you having questions?
Questions? Review? It's a lot to review.
I just want to say that it's, with the information that Lori gave us tonight about the Maryland Bond Act, that there's a number of areas where some of the projects that are proposed in this plan could receive funding.
Yeah. Yeah, and a lot of, exactly. And a lot of the funding we've already utilized for clean energy projects, a lot of those projects I mentioned that have really lowered our footprint. In fact, we're essentially a net zero community at this point, have all come and been supported by state programs. And so, you know, any, any funds in the future that get appropriated towards important projects for both our LWRP region and also for renewable and clean energy and trying to address air pollution, further address air pollution in our community, there's a lot of benefit there. So give it some consideration, folks. Obviously, it's up to you. It's your vote. We're not going to tell you how to vote, but as a board, I think we will at our next meeting, take it up to see if we want to endorse the bond referendum as we have from time to time, you know, efforts on different levels of government that we feel are important for us to leverage funding and put it to good use. We promise we'll put it to good use. Okay. Very good. So those are agenda items 1 and 2. Lori, Paula, Amy, thank you both, all three of you. We're going to jump to community needs assessment. For the folks at home, Red Hook Responds, in conjunction with the Red Hook Community Center, has for some time wanted to do a needs assessment for the combined Red Hook/Rhinebeck communities, both villages and towns, and they are proposing to do a good deal of the project with private funds and are asking the municipalities who stand to benefit the most to make a contribution towards these efforts. And where are we? Essentially, it's a $30,000 project. They've already selected Hudson.
Unzoom it a little bit.
Unzoom it. Thank you. Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress. They've reached out to the other municipalities with the support of some private foundations. And the villages and the town of Rhinebeck, what's left to fund this project is $5,500. And there's a lot that we could learn, some of which we may already know. Housing, right, Julia? Jacob, housing needs. All that can help, help us. And so I'm just scooting through this so that it's part of the documents that folks can review. Here's the total cost of the project. And here are those expenses. And it's expected to be completed within a five-month timeframe. A lot of community outreach associated with this. And so you've had a chance to review it. I know that you all have been aware of this effort for some time now. With many thanks to Neville Smythe and others involved with this project, Sarah Ugalini at the Red Hook Community Center. Any questions, board members on this?
No. As you said, I think we can get a lot of good information, and we've got a number of projects we'd like to move ahead with, so it could be a good foundation.
Agreed. I think especially if we consider updating the comprehensive plan, this will be a really good precursor step.
Exactly. And hopefully we will get that grant to update the comprehensive plan. And nothing more foundational to local government than trying to understand the needs of their residents. And obviously, that's what we try to do each and every day. But always good to get a third outside view of things and get some data that we may not already have at our disposal. Okay, well, with much gratitude to all that have already started work towards this project, I'd like to move resolution. I have to scroll all the way up here, don't I? I'm going to go, I'm going to get dizzy, folks.
60.
60. Thank you, Deanna. There's an addendum. Okay, so this would be an addendum to what, what we already have, which is in agreement with the Red Hook Community Center. For the folks at home, the community center operates many recreational programs for the town of Red Hook, of which we provide some funding. This would be an addendum to that, $5,500, and it's described in the exhibit. And so.
If we go back to the resolution.
There we go. Resolution number 60 for the folks at home. I hope you're not getting too dizzy. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh. Actually, you wanted that one. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Bill Hamel.
Aye.
Christine Kane.
Aye.
Jacob Testa.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you again. And folks, I'm sure that you'll be hearing about this and will be looking to get your input on that project. All right. Moving right along, the next thing is an update, an extension of the facilities agreement with the Red Hook Central School District. With gratitude to the folks at the school board, the business manager. Anytime we can do shared services, whether it's shared facilities or labor, it often benefits our taxpayers significantly. And for many years, we've been doing that with the school district. They have facilities that are not sufficient for all of the sports and athletic programs that they run. We, however, have quite a little collection going thanks to some investments we've been making over the years. And so our facilities have been upgraded significantly. And so the contribution that they will be making towards maintenance is also up quite a bit and significant so that we can keep these first-class facilities and build upon them. So what we have is an extension for 22, 23, and 24. And are there any questions, folks, about that? Okay. Very good. Okay.
Very straightforward.
All right. So this is resolution number 61, authorizing the extension of an amended intermunicipal agreement for shared services. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. It was sure to be in there next. Any further discussion? All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Aye.
Christine Kane.
Aye.
Julia Solomon. Thank you, Julia. Okay, we had some correspondence from our highway superintendent asking if the town board would consider. And there's the agreement for the folks at home in the school district. If we would consider hiring private contractors to do a couple of our neighborhoods, to, when I say do, to plow a couple of our neighborhoods. In part because the highway department has had a couple of people out for, due to illness. And we have rehired both of the individuals that were, when we had to reduce the department at the beginning of the pandemic. So they're back on force. And we are maintaining a staff that's, you know, equivalent to other municipalities at this point. We do have a temporary plow guy as well that we've used in the last year or two on top of that. What are your thoughts about the request to go out to do an RFP? And I should add, Teresa did forward to us rates that were the successful bid for another municipality last year, which obviously seemed quite high. I'm not sure why we would want to pay for other people's trucks. And when we have all that equipment, we've invested quite a bit of money the last six or seven years on new equipment for the department. Doesn't seem to necessarily make sense. In a pinch, we do have cooperative agreements with the Red Hook Village, other municipalities as well. Thoughts?
I have a question for council.
Yeah.
Because it relates to, you know, the timeliness to getting things done. Are there any laws, rules, regulations, ordinances, binding policy directives that require our highway department to get roads or our roads plowed within a certain timeframe?
I think that what dictates that is safety.
Is safety?
Right. There are best practices in public safety, not risk here. So that's the primary responsibility of the department.
Yeah.
My concern is the first paragraph of the highway superintendent's letter. Does she have the authority under any law to just basically say, I'm not going to be responsible? We're not going to be responsible for plowing towns? I mean, I understand that when you have fewer people, things take longer to get done. That happened during, during the pandemic. And yes, it can be an inconvenience, but I'd like to know whether that was a statement with authority.
All right. Well, I don't know who else would be responsible if it's not the highway department. But again, you know, the staffing level is the same, I think, currently as Rhinebeck has. It's more than what Ryland has.
Can I just ask for a clarification? Because this is dated September 6th. And we did hire another person recently. So that where it says here that we have three CDL drivers, we now have four, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there was another letter, I think, a follow-up saying even with the, so they had.
So the, if I, am I correct? So there's four CDL drivers, and then there's two other non-CDL drivers that could do the smaller trucks in some of the other areas or be wing, wing people. Which we also hire people to be wing people.
We have six CDL drivers.
Six CDL drivers. I wasn't sure if the other two people were also. She only said three, so.
I think one is out.
One is out on a long term.
On a long term. And one was out. I don't know if he still is out for a week or two. And there's where, may need to be out for another week or two, but it's not, it's no season yet.
Yeah, right.
So, and we have a temporary, and we've got ads out there for more temporary help for plowing. I've also spoken with the mayor. Again, you know, this is an opportunity for, for our taxpayers, you know, to get cooperation between the municipalities. And if they can back us up, just like we do. I mean, we sweep their streets. It would make absolutely no sense. We actually use the sweeper for the school district facilities. It would make no sense for these individual entities to have their own pieces of equipment. And so, you know, there may be an opportunity, and the mayor seems willing to explore. You know, maybe an opportunity to have, you know, a staffer there, help out, help out with plowing there.
I also have another question, which I'm not sure if, it was also referenced, I think, in the other one. But, you know, she's requesting her, to have an RFP to hire contractors for Forest Park and College Park. And I guess I would also, would like a little, first of all, I'd like a little more information before we could do anything more of this. But, you know, whether those developments would require contractors with large-size trucks like we have, we currently have. Because if they could be done with smaller-size trucks, then going forward, perhaps, we should be buying some smaller trucks than what we have. And then, you know, maybe we wouldn't necessarily have to have CDL drivers for them all the time. That might make it easier to hire people.
That's been a conversation for years about whether or not making sure we have the right equipment for the right jobs, for the right roads. Yeah. And in particular, the tradition development. Those roads will sometime in the near future be, probably be dedicated to the town. And so I know Teresa has been wanting not to do those roads, and has asked that we get the village to do them. And, you know, certainly we'll explore those options. You know, the more, again, the more we can cooperate between the two entities, the better. But we need to make sure that, at least between the two departments, that there's enough staffing to get it done and that everybody's willing to pitch in and help.
But I do agree with you from the chart of the example of the rates from the other town that she gave us. These are very, very high alley rates.
Yeah.
So.
We did also have an interest from a former employee.
Yeah.
To do some plowing, and he does have a CDL and experience. So I think we have quite a few possibilities, and we'd want to.
I did have a question about that one. That one is not, if he wouldn't be providing his own equipment, he'd be driving power equipment, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, he would be temporary.
But so he'd be a temporary employee.
Just like we have another, another individual doing that same, same task. Yeah.
And we do have a lot of budget for temporary help, so that could work.
So I, you know, I'd hope we'd be able to cover things. And if we need to, I think we probably need to advertise for a full-timer in case we, you know, have another retirement or the one on long-term doesn't come back. You know, we should probably, probably do that. Be better, you know, be as prepared as we can be. Right? Makes sense? All right. So for now, what do we think about spending $120 to $300 an hour?
Yeah.
That's what she wants us to do.
Well, that's the example that she gave us.
Yeah.
That's why I said they're very high. And, you know, I think we, I'm not ready to move on this now. And I would love more information. And I think, you know, within her department, she needs to get it handled and get information to us on some of the long-term staffing trends that she sees in her department. So we could, you know, make adjustments to the budget as needed.
And I think we should reflect back on the pandemic. When we were in the depths of the pandemic, how well did we do? Were we able to meet the obligations of our citizens? And I think we were. I mean, it wasn't done as. I mean, it wasn't done as quickly, maybe, in some places. But, you know, I think we have to think about, you know, the ability of the staff. When we were in a pinch, did we get it done? And I think we did.
Yeah.
And of course, you know, we just never... We don't know what sort of snow season we're going to have. So it could be worse or the same, or less, than happened during that staffing. But, you know, just to get a letter that says we're not responsible for it, it's not...
No, that's not, that's not...
good planning or good process.
No. It's not acceptable either. That is the function of the highway superintendent in the highway department, just like, you know, the bridge that we seem to be taking over because she doesn't want to be involved with the bridge replacement. It's just, it's not appropriate. Okay, let's move on. Shall we to reorg? Let's do reorg, shall we?
What was the goal with reorg tonight? Are we just reviewing where we have openings or...?
No, I think we might be in a position to do a couple of appointments, folks. Yeah. Well, first of all, Julia, Jacob, did you all want to say something about the housing committee? Because I understand you guys are making some advancements in the arena.
Sure, yes. So Jacob and I have had a number of really good conversations with folks who put their candidacy forward to serve on that committee. I think that we are close to having a fairly full complement for that committee. And we have circulated some, you know, resumes and information to members of the board and hope to make appointments, not today, but at our next meeting, the first meeting of October.
Great. And thank you very much. All right, we did have some letters where we did get some response from chairs.
Yeah, I missed those on my back. I apologize.
Okay, I haven't heard from the water board chair, Hank. Somebody's mic is on. I can hear the echo. But we have a letter of interest from Philip McDuball. So we'll reach out to Bill. Do you want to reach out to Hank?
Okay.
To see if there's a recommendation there, whether to appoint? We have a lot of letters of interest. The housing committee has mentioned.
Do you want the trails committee?
Yeah, let's go to trails. I think we only had one, although there are two people interested. We only had a resume from one, isn't that correct? Melissa Cohen. And that was just an email of expression of interest. But I did hear from Lisa Wellen, the chair of the trails committee, that they would like to appoint Melissa Cohen. So let's look at, see what we've got on trails available.
We have a vacancy listed.
Sorry. Greenway and Trails. That's why I always miss it. It's under G, Greenway and Trails. We appointed Jim at the last meeting. So my understanding is that what they'd like to do is they'd like to make John Kuhn our rec director and Doug Strawinski, the chair of the rec commission, be ex officio to open up those spots. And they are fine with that.
You mean John and Doug are fine with that?
Yes, thank you, yes. Yes, right. So let's do that in a motion to appoint Melissa Cohen to a term ending in, well, they're both 2022. This will be a very short appointment, Melissa. We hope you'll stay on. 2022. And make John Kuhn and Doug Strawinski ex officio.
So much.
And I will second that. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we also had...
Senior Services.
Who's senior services? Can we do CAC first? Would that be all right?
Sure.
Okay, and this one, we have a vacancy ending in 2023. We have a letter of interest, email of interest from Leah Papika. Did I pronounce it correctly, Leah? Thank you. Papika. Residence since 2015, would like to be on the CAC. And the environmental issues are at the front of my mind. I want to be more involved in our community. Thank you very much. For the folks at home, we run on volunteers. You drive an EV car, thank you. No emissions coming out of the back of that vehicle. We appreciate that. Shop at thrift stores, reduce, reuse, recycle, we like that. And I've worked to get my film sets to not use single-use plastics, very good. And Lori would like to appoint Leah. And so would the rest of the CAC. She has been coming to meetings already. So I would move to appoint Leah Papika to the CAC. Thank you, Jacob. Any further questions? All in favor? Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Congratulations there, yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your...
Enthusiasm.
That too. We're looking for perspiration as well as inspiration. Okay, what do we have for senior services? Who's doing that one? I guess I... Bill, you do it. You do it. Come on. You're more senior.
Do we have a... Did we hear back from the committee chair?
Nope. Who do we have?
Chair of the vision?
Chair's vacant, that's the problem.
There we go.
We got to get that committee back up and running. Who are we interested in considering for that spot, folks?
For the chair?
No, for the committee.
Mary Lu Kander?
Mary Lu, right. And Mary Lu, yeah, she was in our office last week. She'd be great. She's looking for many ways to help our seniors here. We have one, two, three. We've got to take Dick Franklin off the list. So that would be a 2022. We have to reappoint all these folks. I'm fine doing an appointment for Mary Lu Kander, but know that we have to reconstitute the committee and get a chair. So I'll make a motion, reappoint Mary Lu Kander to the term ending 2022, to the senior services committee. And then I'll make a note, we need to know that we're back in person. Maybe we can get that committee back up and running. They were very helpful during the pandemic, by the way. They did a lot of reach out to the seniors, finding out what they needed in our community. And we appreciate all the work that they did. Thank you, Bill. That's a nice way of moving me along. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
You succeeded. Okay, we are at the point where we are doing committee and board reports. Okay, let's scroll all the way down for the folks at home. Please try not to get dizzy watching this. Close your eyes for a moment and we will get to board reports. Bill Hamel, would you be kind enough to give us the village police report for August 2022?
Sure. August, the summer is busy. The village PD responded to 226, what they report as incidents, which included thirteen traffic to Pittsburgh. Remind the public that the state police and the Dutch County Sheriff Office also issued traffic to Pittsburgh for the village PD. And the village PD made six arrests during the month. And the attachment, there's a little few places where it's hard to read, but gives a description of the various things that they respond to.
Yeah, for the folks at home, get an idea of what's going on in the community. Okay. What do we have next? Water board, Bill, you're on again.
Yeah, I was at this meeting.
Okay.
So at that meeting, which was the first water board meeting in a while due to the pandemic, the focus was discussing the wells. One of the wells at that time in June was not functioning, well, number two. That has been repaired. And we had a contractor come in, S.B. Church, and revitalize that and replace the pump. And then there was a significant discussion about the water tank, which in previous board meetings, we have talked about the bond resolution to place the tank. And there was a lot of discussion, the people on the board, the water board professionals, and discussion about the frozen con to be there or rehab, which is basically painting and repairing versus a replacement and the life expectancy of either. And we discussed those here at this meeting previously, so I'm not going to get into it. But that was pretty much the sum and substance. And the result of this water board meeting was what we, as a board, had discussed in terms of doing a bond resolution.
Okay. Good. And you'll get back to us on a potential appointment for Phil?
Yes, I will. I'll return that.
Good, thank you. All right, recreation. Who would like to do a summation, please? There are so many pages.
They do so much, that's really amazing how much they get done.
It's so impressive.
Well, they, a lot of work at Rec Park West. So as, first year, they said that they're completely caught up with the mowing, which is if anybody has been to Rec Park West, it's beautiful. If you haven't been, you should go. So they really have done an amazing job there. And including moving the kiosk that was blocking the view from the benches that were there for the trails. And the plans to finish the dugouts for the baseball field for October. And so that's going to go... Also, the bullpen project that was requested has been done. That was requested by the school. And that has been done. And again, they, the team put their heads together to find a way to do it for a lot less money than was originally projected. So thank you to them for that all the time. Our, the synthetic field is getting a tremendous amount of use and does require, you know, regular grooming and maintenance so that they have been keeping up with that. And a number of teams, you know, finished up their play for this year. So for instance, well, over 40 men's softball is almost done. And the men's basketball league finished and had 141 players participating. So just to give you an idea of how much use this park really gets at all different levels. The expansion of the skate park area is moving forward. And installation of some of the new pieces is scheduled for November. So that'll be great. And Knights of Columbus Fly Football is starting up. And so that's going to be played at Rec Park West. So it's really, you know, a year-round use on this, on these fields. And our team, rec team, does a great job in keeping it all working beautifully.
That's great.
Okay.
I think that's almost as impressive as all the work they're doing. Cheer, we'll summarize it then quickly. Okay, we've got a page that is sideways. Who's doing dogs, Bill Hamel?
Okay. So normally, you know, I do follow up with the SPCA whenever there's dangerous dog issue, which usually involves a bite or a similar event incident. And there were none. So I just reviewed these. And there were three loose dogs that they responded to. A nuisance dog, which is usually a barking dog. And cats, which are often feral cats, because there are, according to the SPCA, about 20,000 feral cats in Dutch County. And wildlife is often their dear or... I want to point out, what I didn't point out previously, is the village PD is often the first responder to dog incidents. If you saw, you grew up six or seven there. And then what they do is they refer, because they're here and SPCA is down at Hyde Park, they often refer those matters to SPCA if they require follow-up. So if it's a loose dog, a nuisance dog, or something that requires SPCA to follow up with the dog or especially dangerous dog, the PD is usually the first responder and then sends it to them for all the additional work that needs to be done. So that is...
Very good. Thank you, Bill. Who will speak for the trees, Delores?
I'll give a nice brief report from the Tree Preservation Commission for their meeting from last week. So 16 trees have been ordered for the fall planting. Those are expected to be delivered in November. And those are going to go in Rec Park West, like Christine was just talking about. So continuing to improve that area, make it even more beautiful. There are plans for a tree inventory update. Those are evolving. We've been in contact with the Region 3 forester for guidance on that. And then the Mill Road school planting will be revisited in the spring.
Great. Thank you very much, Jacob. Who's doing building and zoning?
There you go.
Why? Wait, what?
I am lazy, huh?
Can't you learn to share with Julia? Let her do some.
Thanks, good, good, good.
So of course, the summer and the fall are a busy time for building. So we issued in the month of September 34th building permits. We conducted 79 inspections. As a lot of work has been done. We issued 21 certificates of occupancy or certificate of completion. We handled two complaints from citizens. And they generated $14,271 in revenue. Attached to the cover sheet, which the supervisor is scrolling down, is a very long list of all the permits and all the inspections and all by address. If citizens would like to know the various activities of building activities that are going on throughout the town, that is the document to review.
It will be interesting to see if there's a slowdown in activity. I think it was today or yesterday where mortgages exceeded 7%. It seems hard to imagine in just a matter of months. I have a little bit of background in that area, as you guys know. And I've never seen such a dramatic increase in mortgage rates in such a short period of time. But people are still doing work on their homes. And that's good news for everyone. Okay. Wow. That's a very long list.
It's always long.
It is a very long list.
We'll be seeing some, so...
And there is their chart. Okay, I actually think that's the last item we have for boards and committees. Now, folks, council... Now, folks, council members, before we adjourn tonight, we have to set a special meeting, just a five-minute meeting for next week, where the town clerk can hand off to you my tentative budget for 2023. And spoiler alert, just so you know, the budget will be, I believe it's now the seventh budget that will be proposed without a tax increase in continuing investments. We've said all along, that's not something that can be done each and every year, and when we need to raise taxes, we will. But we're fortunate enough that we won't have to do that next year, I hope, with your concurrence. And so we need to set a town board meeting. It's required by law that she handed to you at a special town board meeting. So what does your schedule look like next week? At least three of us must be here in person for that, and then the other two, we can just deliver at the same time.
Are we thinking like a normal meeting time?
Well, let's see what works. I mean, if it's just five minutes, you know, maybe lunch or morning would work for you. I don't know necessarily. We have to do an evening meeting for that. We haven't historically done evening meetings. It's just a handoff.
They should be available at those times.
Julia?
Yeah, it depends on the day.
It depends on the day. Might be hard for you. And Tuesday and Wednesday were bad for you.
Tuesday, Wednesday, I have, but I could do Monday.
What about Thursday?
Could we do Monday?
Monday.
You could do Monday?
I'm not sure about Monday, but it sounds like maybe you've got enough.
For Monday? Thursday's not so good.
I mean, Thursday's fine. Monday's completely open right now for me, so I propose it.
Okay. Monday, what time?
It could be either first thing in the morning or it could be like anytime after 1:00 o'clock.
Anytime after 1:00. Should we do 1:30 on Monday? Would that work? Does that work for you, though?
Yes.
And I'd be maybe depending on...
Sorry, is that the 3rd?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you can turn that time to notice and all that?
I believe so, yeah. We're going to put it up on the website. Folks can take a look at it. That's the most important thing. Monday, October 3rd at 1:30 PM. I better get my budget memo finished.
See why you're asking for Thursday?
Sure, now you pick up on that, Jacob. Not when I was trying to buy myself a little more time for that. Well, and I like to do a few little slides along with it, right? So...
You have to write the memo for scratch, so...
You know I work weekends, so that's fine. Okay. So let's do a motion to set a special meeting for the purposes of the town clerk delivering the tentative budget to the town board, Monday, October 3rd at 1:30.
So moved.
Thank you. Seconded by...
Seconded.
Christine Kane, Julia Solomon, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Folks, did anybody have any public comments they wanted to make before we close the meeting tonight? Okay, I want to wish you all a good evening for the folks down in Florida. We're thinking about you and stay healthy and stay safe. Good night, all.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Good night, all.
Good night.